We're about one minute to start time.
So Dr. Opera, I do have seven o'clock. If you would maybe, do we have all of our board members present that need to be here?
I am going to do one last check here. I do not see Mr. Holman at this point.
We certainly can give him a minute or two here to allow him to be able to join. Has anyone reached out to him at all?
Yeah, he has contacted me already asking if he was in the meeting and he wasn't. So I think Bryant is trying to give him a call and helping him.
Got it.
Well, while we're waiting, if you like, I could just go over the guidelines for a virtual meeting.
Yes, please.
Fill up a little bit of our time here. The guidelines for conducting virtual were shared in the agenda, but I thought I would also share them verbally for those of you that might be telephoning in and can't see the agenda. This is a bit of a new experience for us. So I ask your patience and forbearance if there are little hitches now and again as we get used to this new virtual format. And we also want to make sure that everyone has a fair opportunity to participate in our meeting. So when speaking, please do state your name before beginning your comments. Some meeting participants again are joining by telephone and can't see the face or the name of the speaker as it's shown on the computer screen. The public participation at board meetings, as per the bylaw 0167.3, does apply to virtual meetings as well. This particular meeting does have two public comments. The first is under number 10 on the resolution regarding waiving of instructional minutes and the civics exam. The second opportunity is a bit later in the agenda, and that is the regular public comment, general comment area noted as number 15 on the agenda. When not speaking, in order to not have a lot of feedback, it is helpful if you mute your phone or your computer microphone. And if you do need to speak and you're having challenges with your technology, I will be trying to monitor the chat box. So the chat box is located in the upper right-hand corner of your screen if you're on a computer. And it looks like a little voice bubble with lines in it. If you click on that, it will open up and then there will be a spot there for you to type your question. That would be another way to communicate with us or during public comment if you just are seeking information to ask questions. All board member votes will be conducted through a roll call vote. Again, those of you using telephone can't see us or may not recognize everyone's voice. So the roll call vote will be the method used in order to ensure that we have accuracy in the tallies. This board meeting is being recorded, and I started the recording at roughly one minute before the start of the official meeting start time at seven o'clock. The recording also includes anything that goes into the chat box. So just a point to ensure that everyone knows that the documentation is being maintained and will likely be shared on the district's website. So with that, President Johnson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Opera. We will come to order. The Manawa Board of Education exists to lead and serve to support the education of all students, focused on developing policies, retaining highly effective staff, acting on behalf of the community and ensuring the sustainability of the district through open and clear communication. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Mrs. Petke, if you were, would be able to call the roll for us, please. You'll probably have to unmute yourself, Mrs. Petke.
Hey, Miss Petke, you can click, click on the button or if you hit Ctrl D, that'll unmute you. Ctrl plus D.
Now can you hear me? I was able to mute.
We can hear you now.
Sorry. Yay. Okay, Mr. Scheller. Mr. Forbes.
Here.
Mr. Holman.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Here. Thank you. Dr. Opera, can you verify publication of meeting?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Okay, our first order of business is consider approval of waiving the two-meeting process according to board by law 131.1 for agenda item number six as listed below. And if you're going to make a motion, if you would please be so kind as to state your name first prior to making that motion.
Mrs. Petke. I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the waiving of the two-meeting process for approval of policy changes as permitted under board policy 0131.1 for agenda item number six as listed below.
And do we have a second?
This is Russ Johnson. I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke and a second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, we're going to do roll call vote. I know Mr. Scheller is on. Do you know how to unmute yourself, Mr. Scheller?
Ctrl plus D, or you can click it, Mr. Scheller.
I can also try running out into the commons and see if I can help him from six feet away.
That might be a good idea because of the fact we're going to have difficulties doing roll call all night long. In the meantime, I'm going to move on to the next board member, Mr. Forbes.
Aye.
Mr. Holman. Mr. Holman, we're doing a roll call vote on approval of waiving the two-meeting processes.
Aye.
Mrs. Petke.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson says aye as well, and I'm just waiting for Mr. Scheller to be able to be unmuted so he can, there we go, Mr. Scheller. Are you able to, to vote on the motion?
Yes. I will, I will say yes.
All right, thank you. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item number six, consider approval of Neola policy 167.1 revised by law COVID-19 special update.
Bruce Scheller.
Mrs. Petke.
Want me to take it, Bobby Joe?
Sure.
I move the Manawa Board of Education approve Neola policy 0167-1. The revised bylaw included the COVID-19 special update regarding voting that it relates to virtual board of education meetings.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Once again, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Scheller.
Yes.
Mr. Forbes.
Yes.
Mr. Holman.
Yes.
Mrs. Petke.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Johnson also says yes. Motion carries. All right, election results. Dr. Opera does have it up there. The Board of Directors of the School District of Manawa do hereby certify that the annexed and within tabular statement is correct and true as compiled from the original returns made to the school district in said school district of the spring election held on Tuesday, April 7, 2020. The number of votes given for the election of candidates for the school board is follows. Union Halvisha Zone 3, Bobby Joe Petke, 528 votes. Stephanie Risky, 520 votes. Augsburg St. Lawrence Zone 4, Elin Paul, 2 votes. Paul Kahn's, 1 vote. Robert Gorman, 1 vote. Carol Wenz, 1 vote. Tom Lehman, 1 vote. Frank Jaeger, 1 vote. Ronald Kaler, 1 vote. Jim Green, 1 vote. Hoffman, 1 vote. Amanda Nemeth, 1 vote. Bowen, 1 vote. Craig Julian, 2 votes. Jim Rins, 1 vote. Royalton McQua, Zone 5, Russell Holman, 905 votes. Now we will do the election of officers. And we will start for the nomination for president. Are there any nominations for president?
Bobby Joe Petke, I nominate Joanne Johnson.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke for Joanne Johnson. Is there a second?
This is Russ Johnson. I will second that motion.
Are there any other nominations for president? Are there any other nominations for president? And our third call, are there any other nominations for president? He goes in favor of Joanne Johnson for president, once again by roll call vote. Mr. Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Forbes.
Aye.
Mr. Scheller.
Aye.
Mrs. Petke.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And I guess I will also give myself an aye. Joanne Johnson as president. On nominations for vice president.
I nominate Russell Holman here. I nominate Russ Johnson.
I have a nomination by Mr. Holman for Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Bobby Joe Petke, second.
Mr. Forbes beat you to it.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations for vice president? And third call, any other nominations for vice president? Okay, once again, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Forbes.
Yes.
Mr. Scheller.
Aye.
Mr. Petke.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Mr. Johnson is vice president. Nominations for treasurer.
Stan Forbes nominates Bruce Scheller.
I have a nomination by Mr. Forbes for Bruce Scheller. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I will second that.
All right, Mr. Johnson is a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Those in favor of Mr. Scheller as treasurer, we'll start with Mr. Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Forbes.
Yes.
Mr. Scheller.
Aye.
Mrs. Petke.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And an aye from Mrs. Johnson. Mr. Scheller is our new treasurer. Nominations for look.
I nominate Bobby Joe Petke.
And who's I?
Russ Holden.
Thank you. I have a nomination by Mr. Holman for Bobby Joe Petke. Do I have a second?
Bruce Scheller, second.
A second by Mr. Scheller. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, once again by roll call vote. Mr. Holman.
Yes.
Mr. Forbes.
Aye.
Mr. Scheller.
Yes.
Mrs. Petke.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And a aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Mrs. Petke is our first. Annual board appointments for our committees. Buildings and grounds, unless there's an objection to any of our members serving on it, it would stay the same. That would be Mr. Johnson Chair, Mr. Scheller, and Mr. Forbes on a buildings and grounds committee. Are you all still willing to serve?
Yeah, yes, Russ Johnson, yes.
Stan Forbes, yes.
Bruce Scheller, yes.
All right, thank you. Curriculum committee. We currently have Mr. Scheller as chair, but I'm going to have him chair a different committee. So I would make Mr. Holman chair, and we will have Mr. Scheller remain on that committee if you both are agreeable to that.
Bruce Scheller, yes.
Russ Holman, yes.
Thank you. As part of that, ad hoc human growth and development committee, Mrs. Petke, you do chair that. Are you still willing to serve in that capacity?
Yes.
Policy and human resources committee, it would be Mrs. Petke as chair, Mr. Forbes and myself. Are each of you still willing to remain on that committee?
Stan Forbes, yes.
Bobby Joe Petke, yes.
All right, thank you. And then finally, committee, Mr. Scheller, I, as treasurer, I would like you to chair that committee. And then it would be myself and Mrs. Petke that would remain on that committee. Are you each agreeable to that?
Bruce Scheller.
Mrs. Petke, yes.
Bruce Scheller, yes.
All right, thank you. And then we also have our ad hoc recognition committee, which is myself and Mrs. Petke. And I presume, Mrs. Petke, that you're still willing to serve on there with our staff members?
Yes.
Thank you. So that one will also stay the same. Our CSU 6 Board of Control Convention delegate, in the past it's been Mr. Scheller. Are you able to continue in that capacity, Mr. Scheller?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Wasby Legislative Contact is myself. I will remain as such. And our Wasby Convention Delegate, Mr. Scheller, you served as that last year. Would you be willing to serve again this year?
If I go to the meeting, I would do it.
All right, thank you. If not, we will look for an alternate when we get closer to convention date.
Yes.
All right, thank you each for agreeing to committee assignments. Public hearing on resolution for school year 1920, number 13, for the waiver of certain school board or school district requirements pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 118.3 subsection 1 and 1M as presented. Dr. Opera, do we need to have a reading of that resolution?
I don't believe you need to read it aloud, although it is available on the screen. If anyone would ask for a clarification, I'd be happy to try to describe for them. We're asking for two things. Given the virtual environment, we are still conducting classes through the end of May as per the school calendar, but we can't guarantee that the instructional minutes completely align with the school day as we would know it face to face. So to be totally transparent about that, we are asking for a waiver of instructional minutes. And then the second would be the civics exam. Ordinarily, we would have instruction on the contents of the civics exam in various courses. And it is also a criterion used for graduation, given that students have not had the same equitable opportunities for learning. We're asking for a waiver also of the civics exam to ensure that when we return to face-to-face instruction at some point in the future, that we can ensure that all students have had an opportunity to learn the necessary material to pass that exam.
Okay, so at this point, we would ask if there are any individuals that would like to share their perspective on waiving the Department of Public Instruction's required annual instructional minutes and/or the Department of Public Instruction's required civics exam. That's a criterion for graduation.
I'm not seeing anything in the chat box, although I'm monitoring it in the event that someone's having difficulty with the muting.
So we're looking to make a motion to accept these waivers or to?
That will be in new business later in the agenda. It is required by state law that we have a public hearing so that the citizenry can weigh in on the topics. So this would be the purpose of public comment that we're having at the moment. Still not seeing any comments coming in, in the chat box. I'll defer to the president as to the amount of wait time you'd like to ensure that everyone's had an opportunity to speak if they have an opinion on the matter.
Well, I will ask a second time if there's any member of the public listening that would have any comment on the public hearing for the resolution. Okay, and then hearing none, then we will move on to our presentation. We have Mr. Foster, who is going to present the results of the recent survey regarding parent satisfaction with the educational programming and site management, along with feedback on a proposal to consider bringing a school resource officer program.
Well, thank you. This is Bill Foster with School Perceptions. Can everyone hear me okay? Did I hit the mute properly?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, and I think I've, when I, I've been up to the, to your districts, I think I've probably have met most of you. So this is a little bit different for all of us tonight, but let's see how it goes. So my goal tonight is to take you through the results of the most recent community survey, and which is up on my screen. And let me see if I can push the right buttons here to go forward. Whoops, let's move that over. All right. So School Perceptions, you know a little bit about it. I think we've conducted a couple other surveys in your community. We do a lot of community surveys for the sake of strategic planning, referendum preparation, and even school resource officers. And we've done a lot of parent, staff, student surveys around the state as well as the country. So thanks for having me tonight. Your survey went out in mid-March. I think the deadline was in early April. People could take the survey online or by a paper. We had 693 people take the survey, which gave us a response rate of 29%, which raises the question, is that good? And the answer is very good. Typically, we see a response rate of between 18 and 20%. So you're well above the average in terms of response rate. And from a margin of error, you're at plus or minus 3.7%. So who took our survey? Couple demographic questions, the first having to do with age. When I look at this slide, I always go to the far right to make sure that our senior citizens are well represented, which they are. So almost a third of the survey respondents were of the age of 65 or above. And we had a good cross-section from all municipalities to make up the Manawa School District, including a couple be from the town of Bear Creek. So all, all municipalities were represented. We had 65% of, or 65 staff members took the survey, or 9% of our sample. We had 216 parents take our survey, or 32% of our sample. And if they have children, what, what's the grade level? So you can see we're maybe a little bit, a few more folks that had older kids, but again, you could have kids at more than one age. And we had a planning question, and the question was to provide a quality education for our students. Please select up to five of your highest funding priorities. So here we broke it out for parents and non-parents. And then I highlighted the top five in a little darker blue. So as the board kind of moves into planning for the summer, these are kind of important things to think about. The first and most important item for both groups who are preparing students for life after high school, be it college career. I used to make a joke that this is always the, I don't want my 25-year-old still living in my house with me until my 23-year-old moved back into the house with us. He has since moved out, so we're okay, but it's important to prepare our kids. So that's a important item, not only from a curricular standpoint, but also from just a communication standpoint, that parents as well as non-parents want to make sure that the district is working on initiatives to do just that. The second, career and technical education kind of falls right behind that. Again, those are skills that provides, or learning, hands-on learning opportunities to prepare kids for jobs in the area. The non-parents had improving achievement in literacy and reading. They felt that was important. Recruiting and retaining high-quality staff came in fourth or fifth, or third or fourth. Small class sizes were important, as well as school safety and security for the parents. So that made up your top five. That's not to say these other things are not important. Just from a priority standpoint, they're, they're the most important things. All right, so then we get into the issue of hiring a school resource officer. Here, we, we only looked at the residents who live in the district because this could require some funding. So we wanted to make sure that the folks who were paying taxes were represented in this particular slide. We then broke it out into staff. Staff is the red group. So the takeaway here is staff, you know, 29% said no, 45% said yes. Or I'm sorry, other way, 29% said yes, 45% said no. So the staff is kind of saying it's probably not a priority to have an SRO. But then we look at the parents, and the parents are better than two to one supporting a school resource officer. So there's a kind of a difference between those two groups. And then our purple people, the non-parent, non-staff, who represent the majority of your voters, they're really split. So 38% are saying yes, 35% are saying no. So maybe arguably a slight, slightly more support from the non-parent, non-staff, but still within the margin of error. I guess the other takeaway here is across the board, about a quarter, about 25% of your staff, your parents, and your non-parent, non-staff aren't sure. So it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. There's, you know, it's always nice when you do a survey of apps, when you have absolutely clear direction. In this case, it's kind of split. So if, in general, if you talk to the staff, they might say, man, there might be other funding priorities. If you talk to parents, they say, oh, that's probably pretty important, the SRO is. And the, our non-parent, non-staff are split. And then when it comes to paying for it, you have an option where you could fund an SRO through Fund 80, what's called Fund 80, which is a way that would increase the levy of the district so that people's taxes would go up, but it would not require a referendum. And so then, same group. So again, it kind of mirrors the, the support. So staff is a little bit more no than yes, parents are more yes than no. And the non-parent, non-staff, they maybe shifted a percent or two into no, but nothing, no dramatic changes. So it kind of aligns, if you think it's important, you're likely probably to support the levying through the Fund 80. If not, you probably don't like the idea. And then if the district were to add an SRO, what advice would you give regarding the staffing level? level? Again, here, you're kind of split. You know, the folks who, who didn't want it as much, the staff, they say, well, if you're gonna do it, we probably only need a part-time person. But the parents are saying, if you're gonna do it, we're leaning towards doing a full-time person. And the, the non-parent, non-staff are a little bit more leaning towards part-time. So I'd say, in general, the, the part-time probably has a slightly more support than the full-time, but we've got a lot of folks that aren't sure, need more information. Let me, let me just hit pause before we go on to this individual school feedback. Any questions on the SRO questions? Okay, I'm assuming you're not on mute and don't have any questions, so I'll continue. So then basically, the rest of the survey had to do with individual school feedback. So the way this worked is, only if you were a parent, were you asked to take these questions. So obviously, these are parent-only. If I, if I'm a parent and I've got a child in more than one of your schools, I would be given the opportunity to respond to each one of the items. So if I had a child at the elementary and high school level, I would respond twice. We then, let's look at the top one. I feel welcome at my child's school. 95% of the people responded, either said strongly agree or agree. And with an average score of 4.26, which raises the question, how do you calculate the average? And the answer is, it's a simple average. So if everybody who took the survey would have strongly agreed to that statement, it'd be a five. If everybody would have said strongly disagree, it'd be a one. There is not a neutral choice, so we kind of force people to lean either to agree or to disagree or to agree. And then we sorted based on the highest average, the lowest average. And you can see really across the board at Manawa Elementary, really strong marks really for all these. So the lowest one was, you know, set aside with communication and a climate of openness and trust exists between school administration and parents, but you're still at 81% either agreeing or strongly agreeing with that statement. So we did the same thing at the, at Little Wolf, the junior high school. Again, very high marks, really across the board. And then at the Little Wolf Senior High, again, very strong marks, with the lowest one being a little lower score in terms of climate of openness and trust, here at 65% and kind of corresponds to the healthy culture. Maybe a little bit more of a question at that level, but everything else is pretty, pretty high. And I think that is your survey result. So again, I'll hit pause and ask any questions on any of the data.
I'm checking the chat box, and there are no questions coming up.
All right, well, if there are no questions, then thank you very much, Mr. Foster, for the information that you have provided to us. Our next, our next presentation is to be from Mr. McGregor, but I do not believe that he is yet here. He is also presenting for Wittenberg, and so we will defer to a later time when he is available to join us. So I will move on then to our service learning implementation, our high school and elementary school teachers. Mrs. Warning, if you would be so kind as to let us know what's happening there, please.
Hey, Anne, do you know you're on mute?
Yep, I got kicked out.
Okay.
I'll try again.
Welcome back.
All right, thanks. Okay. I hope everyone can hear me. Anne Warning, I am on the service learning goal team. And we started this last year, and started to look at that. And we decided to look at the district's plan on a page and notice that one of the district goals was that 90% of K-12 students would engage in volunteer service learning projects each year. So that went, that really aligned with our service learning goal team views and, excuse me? So that aligned with the service learning goal team and what we would like to see happen. So with that, we really needed to come up with a baseline. And the only data that we had was that the volunteer, was through the volunteer hours that are logged every day at the high school level. So we came up with some short-term objectives in order to reach the 90% goal. So the first one was to increase the number of staff, coaches, and mentors that document volunteer service learning projects that are already happening. So we did that by reviewing with staff the documenting procedure for volunteer hours. We also identified as a staff, the projects that are being done, that can be considered service learning. And we were able to look at ones that, projects that we did that were volunteer projects, but if we tweaked them a little bit, they could be considered service learning, which, when we talk about service learning, in order to afford it to be a service learning project, it has to have an educational component to it, which we think was important. So we identified the existing percentage of kids involved in service learning and volunteer projects, and we have a, we got a baseline. We did that through using this volunteer log that, that's filled out every year, and that baseline is 59.6%. We felt that that is, was the low, not because we were not, they were not participating, but it may not have been recorded, put down. And in addition, the junior high school kids, students were not in that document. So we changed the document to include junior high school kids. And then what we did was, we went in and we reviewed with the staff what a service learning project is and what that looks like. We also went over what, where the volunteer log is, how to fill it out, and then developed a list of projects that could be considered for this service learning. So we developed criteria regarding the service learning projects for staff, and will provide that at the beginning of each school year. And again, we included, we include and document the junior high school students' participation. So we encourage more independent student service. So we designed criteria for what service learning is for the individual student activities. Like I said, it needs an educational component, and we reviewed that with staff. We created a checklist for documenting volunteer service learning hours for students. And we are looking to incentivize, we talked about how we could incentivize service learning. You know, Manawa is really good at sharing and helping each other out, so we don't always need recognition, but we felt it's, it's a good thing. So in order to incentivize it, we thought about maybe a service learning club or the 200-hour club, but we really liked the idea of the course for graduation. So, and to also, we wanted to use PBIS assemblies and social media as means of acknowledgement. So when we, I want to back up to the course for graduation. So we wrote a rationale for you to consider to support that idea. So our progress, the documentation, the documentation has been reviewed with staff and forms have been changed. We have the baseline, where we're at and where we need to go. We developed those possible learning activities, and we've talked about those, because I'm going through these things. So the work still to do is committee, the committee continues to look to develop criteria for individual students' projects. I'm gonna move this here. We want to shore up our documentation and verification process for student participation, and we will continue to look at different ways in order, different ways to encourage students to become part of volunteer projects and service learning participation. I'm gonna pause just right, right now. Do we have any questions so far?
How did you arrive at that 200 hour for the graduation cord?
We, we took it as, on average, as 50 hours a year. So it starts at the high school level, so it was 50 hours a year, we felt was doable for the students.
Well, okay. My math was off, so I, I think I, I was coming up with seven hours a week, but there's more weeks in a year in the school year than what I planned, so. So that is, what, about three hours a week?
I, I don't have my calculator out right now. I was, we, we looked at other school districts, and when we talked about what the hours would be, and that's kind of the average that we have noticed in other school districts.
Right. I was just thinking, because students that are in extracurricular activities probably would not have a lot of time during the week to participate in that, but it would have to pretty much take place on weekends.
Yes, to a certain extent, when we look at the service learning projects, so the service learning projects have an educational component to it, so those things can be done during the school, you know, during the school year and through our classes.
Okay.
So it's not always at night or on the weekend. For instance, we had the Wolf Walk, and those hours that they did during the Wolf Walk, the volunteers, were able to record those.
All right, thank you.
And what do you do over there?
And just as a note in the chat, Frasier did do some math, so 50 hours per year would be 1.36 hours per week during the school year.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions I, that you have before I go on? I just, I read the rationale for you to consider tonight, or talk about at some point? Okay. So in response to the Manawa School District goal of 90% student participation and community service, and an effort to recognize the Little Wolf High School graduating seniors' service learning participation during their high school career, the Service Learning Committee would like to propose to the Manawa School Board of Education, a program in which students would be awarded an honor card for graduate, honor cord for graduation. Beginning as freshmen and continuing until April 1st of their senior year, students would record and have verified the number of hours they participated in service learning events. Students who reach 100, 100 hours of service by April 1st of senior year would be awarded an honor card, cord, to wear at their graduation to signify this achievement. The cost of a cord is $7.95. There are a number of avenues in which to procure those funds. These include donors, school purchases with students only wearing them at graduation and returning them to be used in subsequent years, or the student's family purchases the cord. Suggested implementation of this program would be the graduate of 2021. This gives the committee time to establish policies and procedures and communicate the program to students for their full understanding. Hours will be included for each class up until full implementation for 2024. Class of 2021, 25 hours. Class of 2022, 50. Class of 2023, 75. Class of 2024, 100. Some other districts may require a certain number of hours of volunteering. Our committee believes that incentivizing volunteer service learning participation creates a more authentic experience. In addition to the benefits that students receive from this program, the community and school also build benefit through stronger relationships with each other, a deep commitment to the Manawa community, and long-lasting ties to their hometown. So that's what I have. Any other questions?
I assume anything you do during the summer would also qualify as volunteer time?
Correct. We're looking to shore up how to verify that with a teacher or someone, an adult, and how to make sure that what we record is accurate and verified.
Your numbers for qualifying for, look like it was 100 hours for four years, but yet about a couple minutes ago, we're talking about 50 hours a year. So are those two numbers off?
Can you repeat again?
Well, it says like class of 2024, 100 hours, and just a couple minutes ago, we're talking about like 50 hours a year. Now it looks like it's getting cut in half, or what are we kind of shooting for? The number of hours?
So, so next year is our class of 2021, so it's 25 hours, and then, then the next, two, we'll have 50.
All right. I was, I was wondering that same question. Originally, we were talking about 200 hours, 50 hours a year, but then when we went down to this next paragraph, it changed to 100 hours.
Oh.
Is that a typo or?
Let me look again. It's, it must, yeah, it's a typo in my presentation. I apologize. It was 100 hours.
Okay, so that sounds a lot better than 200, I think.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, and the rationale is the correct. I apologize.
Apology accepted.
Thank you.
And my feeling also on the cord would be, I'd like to let them keep the cord, in my opinion anyway, but.
Yeah, it's, it's nice to be able to keep that cord. It'll just depend on, you know, financially, what, what we can afford to do.
Oh, $8.
Go ahead, Bruce.
$8 apiece, and if about 40 kids were to get one of most of the class gets, that's only $320, so that's not, not too bad.
Correct. Yes, I think it's a, and it's a, I think it's a great way to recognize them, and I think that if we, we won't have a problem, you know, having donors or people or families willing to purchase those.
I'll try, I want to say thanks to Anne and the, and the service learning. This is Dan. I want to thank her for all of the work that this group did this year by bringing this proposal together, which will come before the board again in a formal way to a committee, and then back to the board for formal acceptance. But the service that they put in, just deliberating and discussing this, was, was time well-spent, and I'm very honored by those staff members that they came up with such a great direction and I think what's going to be a wonderful proposal.
Good. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. for your presentation. Additionally, I would just like to direct everyone. In the board packet, there was some information regarding some of the service learning projects. October, second grade did a Humane Society drive. November, third grade did Veterans Memorial Wall and Pen Pals. Student Council sponsored a Turkey Bowl food drive. December, fifth graders made fleece blankets. January, Special Ed Department did community helpers. Kindergarten in February did nursing home Valentines, and Student Council did Bus Driver Appreciation Week, and March, first graders did environmental awareness. So some lovely, lovely things that have been happening in our district, and thank you to all of our students. And March, first graders did environmental awareness. So some lovely, lovely things that have been happening in our district and thank you to all of our staff members for. Putting all of that together for us.
Joanne, I think Cory is on two to present about elementary.
If you would please, Mrs. Z.
I, I am, um. Is my presentation up?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so um, on, we do not, the high, elementary does not have a um. Anything to bring to you other than information of what we did. We had a service learning committee also, just like the. Just like the high school. Uh, are we good? I'm getting an echo. Um, just like the high school and our theme kind of was to believe there is good in the world and to be the girl, good. And with the 90% as our goal, we figured it was easiest to teach them through, through our classes. Each have each grade level. Um, take a month to do a service learning project, so the um general idea was that each grade level will do the month. And a project, which a lot of the projects were things that we were already doing. Now it was just putting that part like um Anne said about the educational awareness into it. So they were gonna, they, the plan was to complete the pledge project and then they were to reflect as a class. Um, we had reflection questions that they were to ask, answer as a class, a project. Um, and then the last piece of it was to share out and we had them share out at our PBIS assemblies each month. Um, there was a bulletin board across from, there still is, it's still up there, across from the office that they put pictures on from their, their um project. And then to the public, we had um, they're either supposed to do a newspaper article or um and the Wolf Pack or um on social media. So starting in October, the second grade did theirs and they did the humane society drive. They, they had um kept record of how much um, how much was collected per grade. And then they delivered all the foods and goodies, goodies and um the humane society came in and brought some animals for them to see and play with. Um, in November, the third grade um did the veterans memorial wall and pen pals. They wrote to a veteran. Many of them received um letters back, which was really exciting. Um, and then they had the wall. I wish we had a picture of the wall. It was really great to see um people brought in pictures of their grandparents, their. Moms, their dads, their brothers, their sisters that are veterans. Um, and then got to honor them on the wall. And then Miss, one of Mrs. Stormin's friends, who is a veteran, came in and let the kids try on some of her gear and she talked to them about what it was like to be in the military. Um, that same one, uh, student council did turkey bowl food drive. We've done this for the last three or four years. Um, and then the high school um class comes down and helps us pack it up and we specifically packed up meals. For families. There was over 1,427 total items and then families got an actual Thanksgiving meal. In December, the fifth grade um made police blankets, 52 police bank blankets. They were very busy. And then at um, the picture on the bottom shows the fire, the um fire and ambulance department came. Corrected all of them and delivered them to the families in need. Uh, and January, our special education group um made thank you bags for some of our community helpers. They went down to um. The town hall and gave um thank you bags to the mayor and to the people that work down there, the librarians. And they learned a lot about the different people in the community that they can go to for different help depending on what they need. February, the kindergarten went down to the nursing home and sang them some songs and presented um Valentines to the um people in the nursing home. Also that month was bus driver appreciation week, so student council made um some gifts that they got a daily present from the student council. Our bus drivers do often get overlooked. First grade, just this last month, they put together a video about what um it should look, what um recycling should look like. So they were working on the environmental awareness and then the video was shared at our PBIS assembly. And then there are other planned events that were supposed to happen. Our fifth grade was going to do an um activity for Earth Day. And in May, 4K was going to do grandparents day and the fourth grade would do their Wisconsin history placemats that get used in um area businesses. So that is what has happened at the elementary. In order to make sure that we are reaching our 90%, we did, like I said, we did it through the classroom so that. We knew that they were getting a chance to experience it and really taking the time to talk about what service learning means. So that when they get up to the middle school and high school, they can um become more individual for it. Does anyone have any questions?
No, I just want to thank you very much. This is Mrs. Petke. I just think this is great.
Yeah, they had, they, uh, kids had a really good time and they had a really good time sharing what they did at the PBS assemblies each month also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Z. Wonderful presentation. Have any other staff members that we need to have comment on this? I, I don't want to step on somebody's toes. Okay, if not, I will then um take a step back and uh Mr. McGregor has now joined us. If Mr. McGregor would be able to give us an update on the current referendum that is underway.
I can, and thank you for circling back. I, I appreciate the flexibility. It's a, an interesting night trying to present that to school board meetings, so. I'm making the best of it, but I will uh share my screen. I just have some pictures that I will. Share while I'm going through the update, some, some more current pictures. Um, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Alright. So, um, picture I have up, that's the um chorus room. And the new flooring is installed. That uh, that picture is as current as today and you can see the ceiling grid is in. There's some finishes yet to go on the wall as far as painting. Um, that needs to take place, but it, uh, some of the spaces we got into early are really taking um some pretty major leaps uh in the right direction. But as we look at the overall, uh, the fitness center addition. Um, we're going to be working on framing and drywall in that space. Um, over the next couple of weeks and the mechanical finishes or the mechanical roughens in that space are also going to be um taking shape as well. Um, some pictures inside of the center are showing up now. Um, and then painting will be following. They did uh start the brick facade on the exterior of that building. Um, so that is going to start taking shape. Some of the stuff you can see from the outside. Um, so that'll all be positive. Um, in the admin addition, um, it's a lot of finishes. Uh, we kind of, that one's kind of to a point where. We're trying to let a lot of the other areas catch up, but some of the areas that we are working on at the fitness center, at the admin addition. Um, are some of the site related items as well as getting the new entrance um erected. And with the. Information we received a couple of weeks back with the school closure, um, we worked hand in hand with uh Dr. Opper, um, Mr. Wolfgram. On putting a plan in place and kudos to both of them and their staff for. For the countless hours and planning they have put in place as far as. How to move their staff and where to move them to. Um, it's been great working with them through this whole process. It's been um very collaborative. Um, and I think we're in a very good place now to actually jump in and uh tear a lot of things apart. Um, because that's kind of the phase we're in right now in the interior renovation is going to be a lot of demolition. In the existing administration area, um, as well as the, the new high school collaboration area. And turning those spaces into uh their new spaces. So a lot of that's going to be starting this week and that's scheduled to take place over the next two to three weeks. Um, an abatement of those areas. There's a few areas we have yet to abate the flooring. Um, and those areas, they're scheduled to be here next week, the week of May 4th. Um, and same thing, the areas they have to complete with the different containments, they have about two to three weeks to complete those. As soon as the demo crews get done over at the high school, they're going to be moving over to the elementary school, not as significant amount of work over there, but. Um, still important. Uh, then they'll be tackling those areas, uh, we're creating the um new 4K classrooms as well as uh the special ed suite. Um, some of the items that we are getting pushing forward with this uh new entryway, you'll start seeing the masonry wall going up at the existing building. Um, structural steel onsite getting installed on that addition or that area starting to take shape as well. Any questions on schedule?
Are you able to move ahead?
Sorry.
Say, all areas are slightly ahead of schedule, um, except for the fitness center. The fitness center addition is a little bit behind. Um, but it is getting caught up. The one thing, and I know a lot of, we've had this question from other schools, school districts. Um. Now that you have school shutdown, are you going to be done a month or two months earlier? Um, and unfortunately, that's probably not the case. Just for the fact that we're also dealing with a lot of um manufacturing shortages as well. Or items that potentially are stuck in customs and one item we're waiting on is light fixtures and some electrical gear. That we're trying to get confirmation on ship dates because it is stuck in customs currently quarantined. Um, so those are some of the items that are uh question marks as of right now. Uh, but right now. The, the escalated schedule is going to give us a little bit of a cushion for the summer renovation. Um, but I wouldn't anticipate uh any drastic ahead of schedule. Needs just for what we're seeing in the, the market right now as far as how many people are asking for this uh labor pool and uh the materials as well.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions on schedule? I think there, there was one other.
My question was the same as Bobby Joe's.
Okay. Um, I, I'd love to say, yeah, we're going to be a month ahead of schedule, but I, right now, um, there's a lot of unknowns with uh everything COVID related. Um. The other.
Sorry, I was going to, thank you, but you're not done yet.
Nope, I, I wanted to give you a brief update on budget. Um, not a lot has changed since we last presented, but uh as far as the budget goes, we have used. Um, a little over $280,000 out of our contingencies and allowances. About 21% of what we had um set aside for that, so we're sitting in a pretty good place going into. Um, uh, pretty significant summer renovation. Um, and we also, above and beyond that, we have about $35,000 that is set aside in uh unawarded that hasn't been. Um, technically earmarked for any project or anything, uh, any certain allowance. Um, so right now, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with the, the contingency and the allowances we have put in place and. Um, the, the administration team with Dr. Opper and myself and our staff onsite, we're, we're monitoring it very closely. Um, so that we don't um overextend ourselves um prior to um. This major summer demo we're coming up.
Matt, does Bruce Scheller, I have one question for you on uh. Solar stuff, how are we coming on that or just, don't you know or?
Say it again, Bruce, you broke up a little bit.
On a solar panel. Stuff for the lions?
And what uh, where we're at with that is we should be hearing back from Alliant. In uh either this week or next week. I did not have an update as of today. Um, but Alliant is in the process of reviewing with their staff and then they're going to come back to the district with. Um, what their, what the next steps may be.
Alright, thank you.
So we should have an update for that either prior to or at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions referendum related?
I think it's might be related. I'm wondering about the green space where the old elementary school was. Will they be leveled and seeded this spring?
Yes, that is, that is the, the schedule as of right now. Uh, Fox Brothers is getting back on site. They're mobilizing and getting a lot of that site work starting to get tackled. Um, as well as starting to grade that, that new additional parking lot over there. As part of that scope of work. And um, they're going to be getting that area graded out, topsoiled and seeded this spring.
Great, thank you.
So hopefully we have a, a very good growing season. I know there's a lot of. Community members uh opening praying for that as well. And uh hopefully we can get uh some good germination on uh all the grass over there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright.
Alright, thank you very much, Matt, for your presentation.
Thank you, and again, thank you for being flexible with my uh schedule this evening.
Thank you. Alright, next up, we have Ms. Conley to share the results of the youth at risk behavior survey.
Alright, hello, this is Janine Conley. I'm the school counselor at Little Wolf Junior Senior High School. Um, I'm hoping everybody can see, can you hear me? Okay, hopefully not, or thumbs up.
Yeah.
And can you see, can you see my screen?
No.
Yet.
Okay.
No screen here.
Okay. Maybe I should do present now. No? Yeah, there. Hey, how about now?
Uh, no.
Try again. Present now, present a Chrome tab. Yep. Oh, there you go. How about now? Yay.
Nailed it.
Yes.
Alrighty, here we go. Um, I'd like to present to you our 2019 youth risk behavior survey data. And um, some general facts. Uh, this is a self-report survey. Um, that is given every two years to our students, administered through the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Um, the interesting thing about the data I'm presenting now is the 2019 was the first year that this was done. Um, for students on their Chromebooks. Um, it was a special survey that they could do on the computer. Typically, in the past, it has been. A paper pencil survey. Um, students do need parent permission to participate. And we do that uh via like an opt-out, like if parents do not wish their students to participate, we are contacted. And those students do not participate in the survey. Um, we are going to be doing some comparison now with our 2017 data. Um, just some history, the 2015 data statewide was not usable. Um, but our school and district has been participating in this survey every two years, I believe, since 2007. Um, so that's just some YRBS trivia for you. Um, our student response rate, um, at the high school, we had 193 students um with usable surveys. This is an 81% response rate. And this is a strong response rate uh category. Um, above 70% um is considered strong, so we're there. Um, in our junior high, we had 101 students with usable surveys and this was a 94% response rate, so we're doing very well. Um, I want to go to the positives um in the high school. Now, before I begin this, I do want to say that uh we do not have our national data in yet for 2019. Um, the CDC is in charge of releasing that data and I'm guessing they are very busy. This time and we do not know when we will actually be receiving our national data from the CDC. So what I have done, broken down in both the junior um and junior high and high school is. Um, just a comparison with our state average and then our comparison with our 2017 data. Um. Some positives, I, I think in 2019, our, this was last spring, we have 83% of our high school students report. Feeling safe at school. Uh, this is slightly higher than our state average. Um, we are a little bit down from our. 2017 data, which was 87.3%. Um, we do have 62% uh feel they belong at school and our state average is 61.1%, so we're slightly higher there. Um, and our data is a little bit down in 2017, since 2017. Um, we do have 75% of. We do have 75% of our high school students report that they have a teacher that they can confide in. This is, again, a little bit higher than our state average and has increased. When you look at our data in 2017, which was 63.8%, has increased quite a bit. I do want to also point out that these are not always the same students every year. You know, our 2019 students who took the survey last year as seniors have since graduated. So we have that issue with every two years, but the survey still kind of gives us overall data. We have 70% of our high school students report involvement in extracurriculars. This has increased, we're above state level with that. And this question was not asked on the 2017 survey, so we do not have that to compare to. That's another issue with the surveys, that from cycle to cycle, it does not always ask the same questions. We have 85% of our students, high school students, report having a caring adult in their life. We are higher than the state average, which was 84%, and we're also increased significantly from 69.1% in 2017. Also of note, we have 76% of our high school students report that they exercise most days, and this is well above the state average and also an increase from 2017. Areas of concern for our high school, we had 36% of our high school students report being bullied at school. This is above our state average. However, if you look at 2017, it is slightly lower. We do have 21% of our high school students report being bullied online, which is, again, higher than the state average, yet decreased from our 2017 data. We do have 52% of high school students reported that they tried vaping, and this is above our state average. And again, pretty high increase from 2017. And I think some of that is also due to the, I guess, popularity in vaping itself in the last two years. 39% of our high school students are reporting alcohol use in the last 30 days. This is higher, again, than our state average, yet a slight decrease from 2017. We have 21% of high school students report binge drinking, which are five or more drinks consumed at a setting. This is an increase in our, higher than our state average, yet a slight decrease from our 2017. And 20% of our high school students surveyed report marijuana use. Again, this has increased from the state average and an increase since 2017. And then in the mental health piece, we do have 48% of our high school students are self-reporting anxiety, slightly lower than the state average, but higher than our 2017 data. We have 24% self-reporting depression, and this is a little bit lower than our state average and just slightly higher than our 2017 data. And we do have 17% of our high school students reporting having suicidal thoughts in the last year, and this is slightly higher than the state average, yet decreased a little bit since 2017. Moving on to our junior high, 80% of our junior high students report that they feel safe at school. And sadly, our data does not report data on our junior high students because so few junior high students actually take the YRBS. So for junior high, we don't have any real estate data to compare it to. We just have our previous data from 2017. So this question was not asked in 2017. 70% feel that they belong in school, and this is just slightly down from 71% in 2017. 77% report having a teacher that they can confide in, and again, this has increased since 2017. 80% of our junior high students report being involved in extracurricular activities. This has increased since 2017. 87% report having a supportive adult in their life. This question, again, was not asked in 2017. And we have 71% of our junior high students report exercising most days. Again, this is up since the 2017 data. Areas of concern for our junior high, 21% report being bullied at school, and this is down, though, from 50% in 2017. 13% of our junior high students report being bullied online, as an increase since our 2017. 11% of our junior high students report that they have tried vaping. And again, this question was not asked of junior high students in 2017. 13% of our junior high students report drinking alcohol in the last 30 days. That's up from 2017. 46% self-report anxiety, and again, this question was not asked in 2017. And 23% of our junior high students self-report depression, and again, this is up since 2017. So what are we doing? This is kind of a snapshot of some of the data. We're in our second year of our Stop It app for reporting bullying and any areas of concern school-wide. This is an anonymous app that students have. We've continued, as a staff, also as a district, to really focus on our relationship building, and I think you know, you know, that is seen in the amount of students who are reporting having a teacher to confide in, who report having positive adult relationships at school. We've increased our trauma-informed care training and QPR suicide prevention training for all staff. We implemented our Honor Pass and RTI choices for students who struggle academically. I continue to run small groups in guidance for junior high and high school for students with depression, anxiety, and students who need that extra support. We did receive a grant this year for increased suicide prevention training and also to train students in how to be more responsive to their friends who may be experiencing depression, anxiety, and specifically suicidal thoughts and concerns. We did receive a grant, which will be starting next year, for the Sources of Strength. This is a evidence-based peer support program that's going to be run school-wide. Many districts in our area, New London has implemented this, Hortonville has had this for several years. And it's quite a pricey program, but thank you to a DPI grant, we were able to secure funding. This is a three-year cycle, so every, every year, our students will be receiving training. Adults in the building will receive training to be able to interact more with their peers. We've been doing some mental health education for all students, and we hope to be continuing that into the fall. And as well as our staff in both the high school and junior high level are really focusing on social-emotional learning, working with students on everything from regulating emotions and learning coping skills, but they're infusing that more. It's not just myself doing specific guidance lessons, but it's all staff, basically teaching all students how to identify, regulate their emotions, practice conflict resolution, and things like that. So we're excited about a lot of our initiatives that we have, and I'm most excited our students will again take this survey about a year from now. So we'll have the 2021 data after that to, hopefully, we'll see some good improvements from the initiatives that we are trying. So that is my presentation. I will entertain questions if anyone has any.
Janine, thank you. This is Dan for presenting and for doing such an outstanding job with our kiddos. It's no small task to be able to do what you do, not only in the building, but now trying to deal with a lot of these mental health concerns, however you're able to via long distance. So I'm proud and glad to work with you. So thank you for.
Thanks. Likewise, I'm very proud to be working with our students and families. We have a tremendous district. We have a community that is very supportive of just our students overall, but especially supportive of our students and their social, emotional, and mental wellbeing. So I'm also very proud to be a part of this district.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Conley. Okay, announcements. We have the following contributions to the district. Jalane Bodding, donation of time and materials to make 85 fast face masks for staff use. Storm Foods and Kathy Jo Krieger for delivery of three dozen boxes used at the MES for organization and gathering items to be sent to families during school closure. Hawk Trailers, Brian Timm, use of forklift and pallet jack for moving purposes, and Brian Timm's time to run the forklift. And Amcor and Wayne Krieger, $690 to the bowling club. So thank you all for your very generous donations to our district of both time and talent as well as monetary. Are there any items that any board member would like to be removed from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately? Okay, in tradition, we will then vote by general consent. And hearing no dissent, the consent agenda carries. Item 15, public comments. Are there any public comments that any member of the public would like to share with the Board of Education?
I'm not seeing anything in the chat box.
I will then presume that there are none. Correspondence. The district did receive two thank you cards from memorials this month. One was from the family of Albert Junior Hass, and the other one was from the family of Dr. David Rainick. We have some board recognition. We have recognition for the high school art team. The following student should be recognized for their participation in our team and completing, excuse me, competing in the Visual Arts Classic. The art team placed second in critical thinking, second overall, and first in quiz bowl out of eight schools. The art team completed Maddie Ninehouse, Katie Bushky, Kate Phalen, Aspen Winter, Stephanie Bisa, Haley Truax, Grace Tom, Garrett Yor, Emma Bricky, Morgan Rosnell, Soshi Grimm, Emma Risky, Tyler Thonlin, and Gage Risto. Additionally, there was recognition of youth art month participants, which included Emma Bricky, Grace Tom, Lisa Yoda, and Maya Stevens. These five students were sent to Regional Youth Art Month at the Neville Art Museum in Green Bay. From there, Soshi, Lisa, and Emma's projects were sent to the Youth Art Month display in Madison at the State Rotunda. And we certainly want to recognize Nancy Zabler for her leadership as a regional art cheerperson for the Visual Arts Classic. Her ingenuity and quick thinking helped salvage the festival for eight participating schools. The field trip went virtual overnight. Kudos to her for her dedication to the program, the Visual Arts Classic, and her students. And Mrs. Zabler, would you like to have some comment on what you have managed to do and how you preserve that for our kids?
Hi, everybody. I don't know if you can see me or not. I just want to say thank you. The kids worked really hard. It was a very interesting year, to say the least. We, again, there were eight teams at regionals that the night before, we had to transition into a virtual, and then at 5:00 in the morning, lacrosse region joined us. So there was actually, I believe, 16 or 17 total teams that day that went. So it was quite the experience, but I guess in a strange way, kind of helped me with what we're doing right now, having to work from home and having to work virtually. So thank you so much for recognizing it.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you, Mrs. Zabler. It was quite the feat to have accomplished that, so it really is fantastic that you were able to do that.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And also.
We also would like to recognize.
Certificates are going to be mailed to the individuals. So ordinarily, we do that in person, and we'd hand them out. So all the people that you see listed will need your certificate via the mail as soon as we're able to get those out.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll tell the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We also would like to recognize those who are involved in the meal delivery to our families each week. We have bus drivers Kim Byer, Ruth Forst, Jacob Elsner, Zach Kreisel, Jim Quinn, Vern Shover, Cindy Aspats, Alicia Stibbs, Randy Steingraper, Jamie Stroud, and Suze. In our food service department, we have Sharon Baldwin, Jenny Byer, who has also been filling in for Ralph, Demise Bushky, Sue Lohorn, Brenda Zeiss, Donna Wheeler. And our support staff, Jenny Bestit, Dana Bonikowski, Stephanie Flynn, Cory Gast, Jesse Orch, Julie Peterson, Connie Sell, Marie Zerble. And our administrator in charge of manning that is Carmen O'Brien. So a huge, huge thank you for all that everyone is doing every single day to get these meals out to families. It's 167 families, I believe, that are receiving meals at this time. I'm sure that's not correct, but it's somewhere in that ballpark, and I believe we're going to talk about it later.
Just, if, this is Nancy again. If I could just jump back in for a minute, I had the pleasure of watching those people in action last week. I bagged up all the art supplies and the projects for the kids and had them sent home, but I watched how those people work, and they're amazing. What they're doing is absolutely amazing. They work really, really hard, and I was in awe just watching it.
Thank you, Nancy.
That's so fantastic to hear. It's so great to hear.
And I think Carmen might have something to share.
Oh, I was just going to give you an update on the, we are now servicing for tomorrow 173 families, and we are serving 388 breakfasts and 388 lunches for tomorrow.
It's quite the amazing.
All right, Dr. Oppert, you're on for District Administrator's Report.
Wonderful, thank you very much. We don't have a school representative from the Student Council this month, but we do hope to have someone for next month. They've just had so many responsibilities and juggling virtual learning, but I do know that it's important to have a voice in this public forum, and I do know that they've appreciated being able to converse with the board. So especially during these times, I'd love to hear what our students are thinking about what's happening in their lives, the way they can adapt to a new form of education. I think it would be fascinating. So I'm hoping that someone from Student Council can join us next time for that. One of the things we've been asked to share is that school is not closed. School buildings are closed. Our teachers are working harder than ever. They are being creative. Every day, I see fresh ideas. I see individuals supporting one another with resources and ideas and bolstering each other up with words of encouragement. So it's really important, I think, in the public perception that while the building itself may be closed... itself may be closed for student participation, we are actively engaging and working with students every day, and we will be right through the end of the school calendar, just as planned. In terms of legislative update, we are hearing new things every day, and I know we're working really hard to reopen the state in phases. But there are a few points that I think are extremely important, again, things that the public may not be fully aware of. But the district is responsible for not permitting or hosting any events that would cause students, or for that matter, their families, to gather through June 30th. And we've not heard of any intent to change that at this time. We would pivot, we would adjust if we hear the Department of Health or Department of Public Instruction that anything is changing with regard to that. But again, what we're talking about is not being able to sponsor any events, whether they're held on our property or off our property. If our name is on it as a district, we're liable and responsible for that gathering. And so, not through June 30th. The district also has that property closed through June 30th, and many people were not familiar with this, but it's not just the building that's closed. Our playgrounds are closed, parking lots are closed, the track is closed, walking paths are closed, outdoor recreational activities. Our local example would be the disc golf course, the football field, the practice fields, and again, parking lots. All of those are closed through June 30th. For those that continue to provide essential work in the school building, we are to maintain that social or physical distancing of six feet, limiting group size to ten or less, and adhering to all the health and safety protocols, such as wearing masks, proper hand washing, and other forms of sanitation. So, we do monitor every week. I participate in the superintendent meetings with WASTA and John Bales for any updates. We also have a superintendent's meeting with CISA VI superintendents. This morning, I participated in a meeting with the Wapaka County Superintendent's and our Wapaka County Department of Health. So, again, we're trying to stay as connected as possible and watching for any updates so that we can be on the cutting edge of making adjustments as necessary. And then also on your screen should be the monthly enrollment count. Even in our virtual times, you'll notice our April count is up a few students. We have had two students rejoin us here in the community, so important news for us. And finally, we will be filling a board vacancy. You noticed earlier in the election results that Mrs. Pol did win the Village of Augsburg and St. Lawrence. However, she respectfully did decline. She's adhering to her intent to retire and has many other lovely activities that she has planned. So, she's going to be very busy, just not on the Board of Education. So, we will be looking again at the bylaws. That would be bylaw zero-one-four-two-point-five on the filling of vacancies. And hopefully, the board will have an opportunity to interview and appoint potential candidates in the month of June. I don't know if you have any questions on any of the topics that I've raised so far. I am bringing up on the screen the filling of a board vacancy, so. The first matter at hand is to approach some individuals in the community. I'm hoping you'll assist with that, and they need to live in that municipality, Village of Augsburg or Township of St. Lawrence. And then hopefully, we'll have a chance to have you visit with them and consider those individuals and hopefully appoint someone at that June meeting. I'm not seeing anything in the chat box, so I'm thinking, President Johnson, we're free Did we lose our president?
I think so. I think there was a pop-up on the bottom left saying she maybe have lost connection.
I'm scanning, and I no longer see her in the list. That's slightly problematic, but I guess we call on our vice president in situations like this.
Nice.
Mr. Johnson, please take it away until she's able to rejoin us.
Okay. This is President Johnson. I think somehow my internet died, and I happen to have lost everyone, so I apologize for that.
What a relief. Mr. Johnson thought he was going to be called upon as.
She, Joanne did that on purpose to test me.
No, it just died. The kids are out there in the other room laughing at me because we no longer have Wi-Fi. So, you know, it's one of those strange things. So, we will carry on via telephone instead. Were you able to complete your report, Dr. Oper?
Yes, thank you very much, and we are ready to proceed now with school operation reports.
All right. In that case, are there any questions or comments from the board regarding the school operations reports? Okay, hearing none. Are there any comments from Mr. Wolfgram or from Mrs. Paquita in regards to the reports?
I'd like to comment that I want to thank Dr. Oper this past week with all of the moving of the high school. I said, can I not do a report to the board? I said, I physically don't have the time to put down on paper. I'd rather dedicate myself to the moving process. She was very understandable, and she helped put together a collage of pictures of all of the moving that we did in lieu of my board report. The effort that was put forth by our custodial, by our pair of professionals that came in to help, our teachers that were able to come on in, it was nothing short of miraculous, moving that school in five days. It was, it was amazing. And to walk around, I did take pictures of the rooms and shared them with the staff if they couldn't make it back to the building to see what the ghost town looked like. And my comments to them were that while it made me very sad, it also made me very, very excited to know that when they come back, it's going to look like a brand-new school. So, it was a Herculean effort on the part of everybody. We had some great contributions that you'll see in your packet later on. Kudos to Hawk Trailer for them volunteering their forklift services to come on over and help us move things into the pods, and it was just amazing. The only other thing that I had to report on that didn't make it in, I saw Dr. Oper send an email out with a little award that Little Wolf Junior Senior High School got, and I'll share the love with, I sent it out to the staff, that we are ranked in the upper echelon of high schools in the country based off of a report from the U.S. News and World Report. And their criteria for that was participation in AP exams, mathematics proficiency, reading proficiency, and graduation rate. So, props to my staff and everybody that had a hand in getting this award. And now we get to put a little badge on our webpage. Brian, maybe can help us out that we are one of the best high schools in U.S. News and World Report, and we can maybe stick that on our webpage someplace.
Congratulations. That's awesome.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfgram. Mrs. Paquita, did you have anything?
I just wanted to say that my virtual art show that the staff puts on, well, the art show was supposed to go on this year with the national, with the art and the whole countries and everything, and amazingly how the staff pulled together to do the virtual art show that is on our webpage. And I know Sarah Bordle and Jen Krieger put in a lot of time to make that happen, along with a lot of other teachers and staff. So, kudos to them for pulling that together and all the wonderful things, and congratulations to Dan and the high school for their wonderful award. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Paquita. Business-related reports. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. O'Brien regarding her report? Mrs. O'Brien, do you have any comments?
No comment.
I have a question.
Thank you.
How are the meals being paid for that we are, that we're sending out? Is that through like the school budget, or is there aid from the government, or how does that work?
That is an excellent question, Mr. Holman. I would like to tell you, we are being fully subsidized by the federal government. We are reimbursed for, we, the first thing that we had to do is we had to apply to become a, to have our routes be like an extension of our cafeterias, and, but then each of the meals that we send out is reimbursable. So, the breakfasts are reimbursable at like, I think it's two dollars and sixty-five cents or something apiece, and the lunches are at three dollars and some cents apiece. So, we are, we are doing just fine. We, I wouldn't say we're turning a huge profit, but we certainly are sustainable.
I'm assuming you had to apply for that, so I would like to thank you for that. It would be an excellent program.
It was our pleasure, and I'll tell you, it is so rewarding to see, we get little kids that wave at you in the window when you do your routes, and, and, you know, parents who yell "thank you" out the window, and it's just, it's very, very rewarding.
Carmen actually rode the route and was one of our delivery people all of last week, so she's seen firsthand how hard the work is and what a monumental, she organized it, but she's also been on the front lines of actually doing the work alongside all the other folk that we have on the team.
Last Wednesday, the Manoa FFA alumni donated milk vouchers to all of our families. So, every single family is on one of the routes, and so we have eight routes. So, you know, each route where we, the route that I rode, we made fifty-four stops. And on my little tracker, I climbed nineteen flights of stairs, four steps at a time into the bus. It was a lot of work. My knees hurt the next day.
A good job on your step count.
Thank you. It was amazing that day. Probably will never be that good again.
Thank you very much, Mrs. O'Brien. Directors' Reports. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cobberup or Ms. Brower regarding the report?
I would like to thank.
Any comments from either of you?
I'd like to thank for helping me get online to the meeting.
We appreciate the troubleshooting for all of our technical difficulties that we have.
And is all the technical things going well for the students as well?
Yeah, it was, we had about twenty families that did not have internet access in the beginning. Some of them we were able to give Kajit hotspots to, to give them internet at home. As soon as everything happened and people had to go home, we put in an order for enough Kajit devices to cover everybody else. That took a while to come in. As you can imagine, anybody who had hotspots for schools was slammed with orders. I think the guy told me he got six months' worth of orders in three weeks. So, once those, once we got through that backlog, we had that issued. Now, at this point, we don't think, we think everybody in the district is covered with internet in some way, shape, or form. The hotspots aren't great or perfect. We prefer if it was fully wired internet to everybody's homes, but this is all we could do with the, with the resources and time we had. So, at this point, everybody has some sort of internet access at home.
Thank you. I just know my daughter's trying to do college from home, and it's a struggle.
Yeah, I was, we had a meeting with a bunch of tech coordinators, and we were joking that we're going to get all the rural people to march on Madison and get some, some internet to all the homes, because I think some of the people who live in Madison don't quite realize how bad the internet is out here.
For sure.
I feel like somebody should be talking right now.
I'm wondering if we lost our president again. Let me just check. I was feeling like it was an awkward silence also. Uh, oh, she may be back.
Russ, this is your big chance to take over.
Yeah, I, I do believe you're back again, Mr. Johnson, because she, she appears to be gone momentarily. She may be back.
Well, then we are down to, anyone have anything for board comments?
It is Bruce Scheller. Bruce Scheller, I'd like to make a comment, just to thank you to whoever put up the signs for the seniors up by the road. I'd like to say thank you to a group of people that did that, or teachers, whoever did it.
That was the senior class advisors, Michelle Koscholak and Ann Warning mounted that campaign and came to us with a proposal about a week ago, and they made it happen very quickly. So, yeah, props to them.
Very appreciative of that. That was just great. And also thank you out, yesterday, somebody put up a name of every senior on a Simcoe Union Thresherman's fence as you go into Simcoe, and they put lights on it. That was really nice to see. That was, that was really pretty.
I don't know who did that.
I'm going to have to take a drive out there and take a look. That sounds nice.
It actually lit up at night.
Yep. Looks really nice.
Yeah, we got to find out who did that.
Absolutely.
Well, Joanne, do we have you back? I think not.
I'm not, I'm not seeing her rejoining just yet.
Okay, so we'll move on to.
Am I unmuted?
Are you back?
You're unmuted.
You can hear me now?
Yeah, we're down to committee reports.
Okay, perfect. You know, I realized that I had skipped board comments, and so I did hear some of Mr. Scheller's remarks. There is a video on what's happening in Manoa that features the, the senior names down in Simcoe that's actually set to pomp and circumstance if anyone would like to check it out. It was, it was quite moving to watch that, so I'm not sure if that has to do with the Thresherman's Club or who put that on, but it would be interesting to know. but it would be interesting to know what that is. And my neglecting to go through board comments, and I apologize if any board members besides Mr. Scheller had any comments. I lost internet service again, and so I cut out. I do have comments to share as well, and I just wanted to say that on behalf of the Manawha Board of Education, that I would like to thank Mrs. Alyn Poole for her years of service on the board and to congratulate her on her retirement. Mrs. Poole served on the board during the 2004-2005 school year and was appointed to the board May 2013 and served a total of eight years. During that time, she served on curriculum, policy, and human resources, human growth and development, and finance committees. She served as vice president and most recently treasurer. She was a CISA VI delegate and a WASB delegate for the annual joint convention. She also accepted exit interviews from our past employees. Mrs. Poole earned 255 development points from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards for her attendance at professional development events, legislative events, and attendance at the annual joint convention. Mrs. Poole also regularly attended CISA legislative breakfasts, where she was able to meet with legislators and advocate for public education. Several years ago, Mrs. Poole and I drove to Madison to attend a WASB Day at the Capitol, where we were able to meet with Senator Luther Olson's staff, as well as to have a private meeting with Representative Kevin Peterson to discuss the educational needs of our district. Throughout her years of service on the board, Mrs. Poole worked tirelessly to advocate for public education, transparency, and equality. She always truly had the best interest of our student, staff, and district at heart. It has been an honor and privilege to have her as a colleague, and we wish her the very, very best in her retirement. And I will be forwarding those remarks to Mrs. Poole as well, since she is not with us this evening, and she also did not opt to join in, so I will email them to her personal email account as well, so that she can see them. Onto board committee reports. Were there any questions or comments for any of our committee chairs? Okay, hearing none. We will then move on to unfinished business. Item A, consider approval of Neola policy updates, volume 29, number one, excluding policies 2370, 3122.01, 4122.01, 7540, 7540.02, 7540.04, and 7544.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve Neola policy updates, volume 29, number one, excluding policies 2370, 3122.1, 4122.1, 7540, 7540.02, 7540.04, 7544 as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Petke, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Is there any discussion? Okay, we will vote by roll call. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. The motion carries. New business, item A, consider approval of waiving the two-meeting process according to board bylaw 131.1 for agenda item B as listed below.
I move that, Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approves the waiving of the two-meeting process for approval of policy changes as is permitted under the board bylaws 0131.1 for agenda item number B as listed below.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Okay, second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item B, consider approval of Neola policy 84020.01.
I move that to consider approval of Neola policy 8420.01. Epidemics and.
And that was Mr. Forbes?
Stan Forbes.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I will second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call vote, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item C, consider approval of resolution for the waiver of certain school board or school district requirements pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 118.38 subsection 1 and subsection 1M as presented.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve Neola policy 8420.01, epidemics and pandemics as presented.
Okay, so I think that we had a glitch with our wording that was presented to us. It would be for the resolution for the waiver of certain school board or school district requirements.
Oh, okay.
So if you want to rephrase that motion?
All right. Bruce Scheller? I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve for the waiver of school, certain school board or school district requirements pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 118.38.1 and 1M as presented.
All right, thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, I second it.
Okay, second by Mr. Holman. And any discussion? Okay, then again by roll call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item D, consider approval of the high school universal screening proposal as presented.
Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the high school universal screening proposal as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Russ Holman, second.
Okay, Mr. Holman beat you to it. Mrs. Petke, any discussion? Okay, hearing none again by roll call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item E, consider approval of Anthem Incorporated as the insurance carrier beginning July 1, 2020 as presented.
Russ Johnson here. I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve Anthem Incorporated as the district's health insurance carrier beginning July 1, 2020 as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call vote, Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item F, consider approval of the spring co-curricular contract pay as presented.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve the spring co-curricular contract payments as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Okay, second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion?
I could not find this on my, when I looked for it online. Could you explain what's happening, please? It looks like this year they're gonna be paid at 50% this spring, or enlighten me, please.
Mrs. O'Brien, if you, thank you.
The recommendation is that all of our spring co-curricular contracts are, we've had signed contracts with those people, and so the recommendation is to pay them at 50%. And then any of our year-long contracts where the people, the advisors and such, were not able to, you know, kind of complete the contract, we were over 50%, you know, we were 75% complete with the school year, so I am recommending that we pay those people at 100%.
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, and we will move forward by a roll call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by a roll call vote. Item G, consider approval of AG4141 Criminal Background Check Procedure as presented.
Bruce Scheller, I move that the Manawha Board of Education approve Neola Administrative Guideline, AG4141 Criminal Background Check Procedure as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Petke, second.
Second by Mrs. Petke. Any discussion? Hearing none, once again by roll call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item H, consider approval of school year calendar for 2021-22 as presented.
Mrs. Petke, I make a motion to accept the 2021 agenda, excuse me, calendar as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Petke. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson.
Mr. Forbes beat you to it. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, again by roll call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Next meeting date is going to be starting May 5, 2020, Curriculum Committee, 5 o'clock. That is a virtual meeting. May 5, Policy and Human Resources is at 6 o'clock. In fact, I'll just let you know, all of our meetings are virtual. May 6, 2020, Finance Committee Meeting, 5:30. We do need to set a Board of Education meeting to approve graduation 2020 plans. That will also be a virtual meeting. May 13, 2020, Buildings and Grounds, 5:30. May 18 is a regular Board of Education meeting, 7 o'clock. June 2, Ad hoc Recognition Committee Meeting, 4:30. June 10, Buildings and Grounds, 5:30, and June 15, regular Board Meeting, 7 o'clock. And again, all of those meetings are virtual. Dr. Uppert, did you want us to attempt to set a special Board of Education meeting regarding graduation plans, or did we want to save that for another time?
I'll defer to your preferences there. Mrs. Fraser could always assist by polling you at another time. Students will be surveyed. That'll go out later this week, and we wouldn't anticipate having the results, and so sometime later next week. So we can notify you as soon as we get all the results. And if it would look like we're doing anything other than what's posted on the calendar, which is the Memorial Day weekend, 11th and Monday, Saturday, being it is an approved calendar item, if we were going to do anything other than that based on the survey results with our students and parents, you would need to change that in the calendar.
So in that case, I think I will just defer to a later date, and Mrs. Fraser can just poll us, and we can pick a time that'll be probably a little bit speedier. So then at that point, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn, Russ Holman.
I have a motion by Mr. Holman. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Petke, second.
Second by Mrs. Petke. Any discussion? Hearing none, again by roll call vote. Mr. Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Petke?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Johnson is an aye as well. Motion to adjourn carries at 9:06 PM. Thank you all very much for attending our meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Take care.